Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I'm going to call to order the 231st Brookfield Town Meeting. And I'd like to thank all of you. So all of you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And take your clap. My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to your republic, a free, honest, one nation, united, in the name of our liberty and justice for all. And while you're getting situated, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all the townspeople that passed away during this last year. Thank you. And I'm now going to introduce the selectmen, who are not seated in this order. Chairman Rich Sacker, Vice Chair Ed Gothier, and Selectman Brian Robeshaugh. And for no reason in particular, Robeshaugh is spelled R-O-B-S-C-H-E-A-U. Just a fun fact, just letting everybody know. If we have any new town residents with us today, feel free to stand up, state your name, and say where you live. All right, if there's anyone here who is not a registered voter, as a reminder, don't vote. It's a misdemeanor if you do, and I don't want that happening during our meeting. And before I forget, I'd like to thank all of the town officials, whose terms will be finished at the end of today's meeting. Thank you very much for your service. And on a similar note, directly after town meeting, we will go into the other room where the acoustics are better, and we will get sworn in by Karen, our town clerk, directly after the meeting. So anyone that's here that was elected during Tuesday's election, that's the process that we've got to follow. All right, as always, the rules for town meeting are available on the town's website. These are also printed on the inside cover of the town report that is at the desk by the fourth door. And with that done, I kindly entertain a motion from the floor to waive any formal reading of the rules.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The motion passes. Even though we just did that, I'm going to point out a couple things. One, if you wish to be recognized by the moderator, raise your hand and stand. And then, once you're recognized by me, please state your full name in the road you live on. That will be a big help for the minutes for the town meeting, if you're keeping that. And as always, discussion occurs through me. That keeps everything civil. That way, we can be disagreeable, or we can disagree without being disagreeable. Other way around. So that's just for decorum in having all these students. I will now read the results of Tuesday's town election. Article one was voting for all town officers coming here by ballot. For selectmen, the winner was Austin Feifeld with 79 votes. For town clerk, Karen Survastic won with 155 votes. For town tax collector, Rose Sacker won with 152 votes. For treasurer, Joanne Dalbert with 149 votes. For trustee of the trust fund, Margaret Ingles with 147 votes. For cemetery trustee, Kate Nguyenhaus with 144 votes. For planning board, there were two people elected, Leah Gage with 93 votes, and Mark Lothgren with 96. For planning board, Stephen Berry won with 76 votes. For moderator, James P. Coles, meaning me, won with 147 votes. For supervisor of the checklist, Rose Sacker with 148 votes. For library trustee, Jan Leppert with 144 votes. In terms of the articles that we voted on, the warrant articles that we voted on on Tuesday. Article two, which was, "Are you in favor of adoption of amendment number one to the Brookfield zoning ordinance as recommended by the planning board as follows? Except all lots which legally existed as of March 12, 2024, from complying with the five-acre minimum lot size." That won with 121 yes votes. Article three, "Are you in favor of adoption of amendment number two to the Brookfield zoning ordinance as recommended by the planning board as follows?" And then, Article two, A to C, "To increase the required road frontage for building lots from 250 continuous feet to 400 continuous feet, but to exempt lots which legally existed as of March 12, 2024, from the 400-foot requirement." That passed with 94 yes votes. And Article four, "Are you in favor of adoption of amendment number three to the Brookfield zoning ordinance as recommended by the planning board as follows?" And then, Article 10, definitions, "To provide that if a term is not defined in ordinance, but is defined in state law, the state law definition shall govern, and if there is more than one state law definition, the more stringent shall prevail." That passed with 134 yes votes. Before I get into the town board articles that we will be voting on today, I want to announce that there is a notice of recount on Governor Wentworth Regional School District, Article number two, and I'm going to read the entire notice into the record. It says, "To the inhabitants of the Governor Wentworth Regional School District in the towns of Brookfield, Effingham, New Durham, Osiphe, Tufton Borough, and Wolfborough, and the counties of Carroll and Stratford, State of New Hampshire, you are hereby notified to meet at the following time and location, March 20, 2025, at 3:00 p.m. at the Kingswood Regional Middle School Multipurpose Room located at 404 South Main Street, Wolfborough, New Hampshire. You are hereby notified to meet as described above for the purpose of holding a recount on Article two of the Governor Wentworth Regional School District's 2025 warrant." Article two reads, "Shall the Governor Wentworth Regional School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriation by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth in, totaling $67,427,393. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $66,574,504, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Governor Wentworth Regional School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, Roman numeral 10, and 16 to take up the issue of a revised budget only." Note, this warrant article, parentheses, "operating budget," does not include appropriations requested in any of the other warrant articles. The school board recommends this appropriation, six to two, with zero standing, and a majority vote is required. So in English, there is a recount happening on March 20, 2025, 3:00 p.m. at the Kingswood Regional Middle School, 404 South Main Street, to vote on just the recount related to Article two, as I just read it. All right, we will now begin with the town board articles, starting with Article number five, which I will read into the record, and then Rich will discuss this on behalf of the selectmen. So warrant article number five, "Adopt modified elderly exemption. Shall the town modify the provision of RSA 72:39-A for elderly exemption to increase it from $30,000 to $50,000 of the property tax value in the town of Brookfield, based on assessed value, for qualified taxpayers? To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least three consecutive years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married to each other for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $50,000, parentheses, currently $25,000, or, if married, a combined net income not more than $60,000, currently $30,000, and own net assets not in excess of $75,000, currently $50,000, excluding the value of the person's residence." A majority vote is required, and the selectmen recommend this article. Rich, take your leave.
We've had this on the books for many, many years, and we've had it adjusted the parameters in at least the last 15 years. And after taking a look at our system with respect to cost of living and how much our taxes have gone up, for the elderly people in town that need to qualification, we thought it would be fair to increase the reduction in the assessment by $20,000, which is really, at today's tax rate, a $200 reduction in their tax bill. We just want this time to do that.
All right, is there a motion on the floor for this article? So who? Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. All right, I will now open the floor for debate. All right, seeing none, are you ready for the question?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries. All right, warrant article six, "To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be added to the Road and Bridge Repair Capital Reserve Fund." Majority vote is required, and the selectmen recommend this article, and Ed will take it over here.
Every year, we've got to spend some money to maintain our roads. This year, we're going to spend, if we want to raise and appropriate, $75,000 to do that. And it's going to cover several projects, but primarily, it'll be a clock road overlay and some work on Moose Mountain Road to get rid of the water issues. And we think the $75,000, in addition to what we have in the budget of line item for road repairs, will cover.
All right, is there a motion on the floor?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second, a second.
Seconded. Can you stand up and say, but actually, is it helpful for you if people say yes? All right, so who's put the motion on the floor?
Brad Williamson.
Brad Williamson, what road? Of what road?
Life, Life Road.
And seconded by?
Terry Ward.
Terry Ward.
Help it on the road.
We'll start doing that now. Take your hands off your parents. All right. And I will now open the floor for debate. Yes, please stand and say your name.
Marshall Over, Brookfield.
Oh, we're in Brookfield.
You weren't from there. I'll ask you more questions.
What is the line item budget for road issues? I mean, this budget, I haven't. What is the budget line item for road repair this year?
475,000. Yeah, 475,000.
That is $475,001. It's on page 18 of the town board.
It's on the bottom of page 18.
Any further debate from the floor, or any further questions? Yes, please state your name.
Dr. Shelley, my work road. How do you intend, where's the money coming from, this $75,000?
That is going to be coming out of the Capital Reserve Fund, if we down to road repairs.
Thank you. Yes, please state your name.
Mike Ingles, Pinkam Way.
Sorry.
I think the next one, I think you've got the murder six.
I have to correct myself, Mr. Over. This article is to put the money into the Capital Reserve Fund. The next article, legally, article takes it out to spend it.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Over.
Any further debate from the floor? All right, seeing none, are you ready for the question? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say, or all against, say nay. Here, none, the motion carries. Warrant article six has passed. All right, moving on to warrant article seven, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 for the major repair of town roads, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of said sum from the Road and Bridge Repair Capital Reserve Fund, majority vote is required, the selectmen recommend this article, and Ed will speak to this warrant article as well."
Okay, everything you said before applies now. This is where we withdraw the money from the Capital Reserve Fund to work on those projects, such as Moose Mountain and top.
Do I have a motion on this warrant article?
So who?
Can you state your name, please?
Leah Gage, Governor of Brooklyn.
And do we have a second?
Susan Wise, Pinkam Way.
Thank you. All right, I will now open the floor for debate on warrant article number seven. Yes.
Frank Fraser, my friend, oh, I have a question probably directed towards the road agent. Does he feel he has sufficient budget to do what he needs to do this year to, is this not, we have enough money, but it falls off of your plan?
Yeah, based on our discussions.
Can you please stand up and state your name?
Chris Pinbill, road agent.
Thank you.
Moose Mountain Road. In the fall, we go through and determine what we need to do for the year and work together to create a budget, and I feel that it's adequate to do the things that need to be done for this year.
Yes.
Marshall Over.
From Brookfield.
So Chris, we were talking about bridge, SRPC, to get that fixed and get it out of, you know, the long list of projects potentially. So does any of this money apply? Do we have any funding for that when we get it through in the year or two?
I would correct the question more to the selectmen, because they would know where one's in the reserve fund for the bridge repair.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
We have two questions for the road work, one for Moose Mountain Bridge, the other for general road needs. I believe the road, the bridge you're talking about is the new bridge there, okay, we'll consider it for tumble down Big Road. At the lowest point of tumble down Big Road, and I suppose wherever we have significant rains, the road actually floods, and it's dangerous to drive through it, no one recommends driving through it. And we have residents that live on the other side. So in the past, we dealt with it, and then we have residents living up tumble down Big Road, we have to deal with it. The fix seems to be, there's so much water, the fix seems to be some sort of bridge. And I think what they're talking about, SRPC, and Chris is getting maybe some engineering work done, what it will take to do the job, and then we're going to figure out how we're going to fund the job. It's much as the culvert, the collection of culvert, it will likely go to be some sort of small bridge. So to answer your question, that money really isn't in the budget.
Any further debate on warrant article seven from the floor? All right, seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. All right, any eyes have it? The motion carries. Article seven has passed. And just because we've had some more people come in, just as a reminder, if you are not a registered voter, you cannot vote today on any of these warrant articles. All right. Move on to warrant article number eight, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000 to be added to the Property Reevaluation Capital Reserve Fund, majority vote required, the selectmen recommend this article, and it will be taken up by Ed."
In this warrant article, as most of you are sure are aware, we had a complete revaluation of the town this year. The state recommends that we do that at least every five years. So by putting $9,000 away into this Capital Reserve Fund, the intent would be to do it for the next four years. So when the cost comes to do the full rebuild in four years, we won't get hammered with a large chunk of money. So it's all the way a little bit every year, make it a little easier for our town road, and that's the intent of this warrant. We drew it down last year, the date of the rebuild, we had 24. This will stop putting it back in.
Is there a motion on the floor for this article?
Brad Williamson, some.
And do we have a second?
Susan Wise, Governor of Brooklyn.
I'll now open the floor for debate on warrant article number eight. Yes, please stand.
Mike Ingles, Pinkam Way. It does should read Common Fund, it's not a Capital Reserve Fund.
You're saying it should be the Common Reserve Fund?
It's Common Fund. We have three kinds of accounts. We have a Capital Reserve Fund, a Common Expendable Fund, I guess, actually, we call, and then the cemetery.
In order to correct that, I believe we would have to do an amendment to the article, and the amendment would need to be in writing. We can learn on that. You brought it up anyway.
Do I have to rewrite the whole?
Yes, so you have to rewrite it, and then put in the amendments, and then, once you are done with that, we will take that to the floor to take up the amendment.
Fortunately, maybe it's relevant to show.
Yeah, it's good news.
Which one?
We have to deal with the amendment first, and then we will deal with the next.
Just going to clarify.
Are you going to be amending the amendment?
No.
Okay, good.
Adding those pink and white, just so people are aware, it's on page 80 on the Common Funds, and it's the second line item down there.
Thank you. All right, do we, first I'm going to read it, amended article, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000 to be added to the Property Reevaluation Common Expendable Fund." Did I read that correctly? Common Expendable Fund, do I have a motion on the floor for this amended article?
So who?
Do you have that, Karen? And we have a second.
Second, Susan Wise, Pinkam Way.
All right. And I'll now open the floor for debate on amended article. Yes.
Marshall Over. So every five years, you do reevaluations, correct? So what did you have done the last time?
What is, so slightly under 50, we have to draw down 32 from the reserve fund.
Any further debate? All right, are you ready for the question?
Yes.
On the amendment?
On the amended article. Yes. All right, seeing none, are you ready for the question on the amended article?
Yes.
All right, are all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Here, none, the amended article eight has passed. All right, and going to. All right, moving on to number nine.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I think we just voted on the amendment.
I think we did this last time.
Yeah, and we didn't vote on the article as amendment. Correct.
Okay, so we voted to pass, so we voted to amend the article. All right, do we have a motion on the floor on the amended article now? We did do this, literally, not say. Sorry. Susan, and do we have a second?
So second, Brad Williamson.
Thank you. All right, any debate from the floor on the amended article? All right, seeing none, are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All those in favor of the amended article?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Now it passes. We literally did that last year. Exactly the same thing. All right, now moving on to article nine, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,000 for the repair of the townhouse, and to fund this appropriation by withdrawing that amount from the townhouse Capital Reserve Fund of the repair of the townhouse." Majority vote is required, the selectmen recommend this article, and Brian will take it up for the selection.
This, this building has, the paint is chipping and is discalibered, so we have a quote for $18,000 to scrape it and then paint it. So the $18,000 will be for the front of this building, so.
Do I have a motion from the floor for this article?
So who? Rose Sacker.
Rose Sacker, and we have a second.
Second.
Now open the floor for debate on warrant article number nine. Do you have any discussion or debate? Yes.
How many bids did you receive?
Please state your name before.
Nelson, how many fates did you receive on this?
Can you state your name first, we don't know anything.
Nelson.
Phil.
Two or three.
And any further debate from the floor? And any further debate from the floor?
Yes.
Steve Barry, Ralph Rowe, is this only for the farmer yelling?
Yes.
Wow. Yes.
Any further debate? We're coaching our opinions. Seeing none, are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Warrant article number nine has passed. Moving on to article 10. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be added to the townhouse capital reserve fund, majority vote is required, the selectmen recommend this article and Brian will take it up for the selection.
We're, we're just, we're just, we're just replacing the money for the, for the, for the townhouse and, and it's $25,000.
Do I have a motion from the floor to take up this article? Do you place it there?
Harry Wilson, I hope we accept that article.
And we have a second.
Second, Brad Williamson.
I will now open the floor for debate. And Marshall from Brookfield?
What's the plan for the town to prepare? What's next up?
Probably the roof and the steeper roof and the, this roof and the schoolhouse roof.
That's the big one.
Yep.
Any further debate? On warrant article number 10. Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Right here, none, the motion carries. Warrant article number 10 has passed. Warrant article 11, to see if the town will vote to discontinue the mutual aid fund estimated amount $12,693, December 31st, 2023, and any interest accumulated created in 1991. The said funds are to be deposited in the town's general fund, majority vote is required, and the selectmen recommend this article and Brian will take this up.
The, the, the $12,000 was, it was like, you know, 1991, with, with, with a forest fire, we, 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 we can, we can contribute 50% and the, and the state will, the state will contribute a, the remaining of the 50%. But a forest fire is going to be at least $100,000 or.
Hold on, Brian, this is on 11, not 12. I think 12 is the forest fighting, the firefighting one. 11 is the mutual aid fund one.
The mutual aid.
Okay.
And so, and so like, you know, if, 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 if we have a forest fire, the state will, the state will pay 50%, and then, and then the town will be required to free the other 50%. But the 12, the, the $12,000 is, is, it's like, it's like a drop in the bucket, so, you know, so we're gonna, so, so we, so we want to, we want to dis, I think, we want to discontinue the fund.
Okay, do we have a motion from the floor for this article?
Meg Engels, Pinkamway.
Do we have a second?
Leah Gaines, Governor's Room.
Thank you. All right, I will now open the floor to debate on warrant article number 11. Yes.
This is not specific to this particular.
State your name.
Sorry, Harriet Wilson, still. This is not particular to this particular warrant article, it applies to the next three or four. We get a little careless with how we name the trust formed in the, for these two things. There's capital reserve fund and there's the common expendable trust, as we discussed in article eight. Do we have to change those, discussify which fund it is, or can we just let it go?
Okay, so are you talking about anything having to do with article 11 yet, or are you just referring to the way that the, if you're saying that something is written incorrectly, then we will have to do amendments as we take up each one the same way that we did with...
If the mutual aid fund is listed under capital reserve, the firefighting one would just, the next one is listed under common expendable, and on the next page for 13 and 14, we have the same problem. Since it doesn't name the fund, maybe we don't have to worry about it, but I would have to come back next year to look again and re-ship it over.
All right, so, yeah, so if, if basically something's misstated in here the same way that it was in warrant article number eight, where it was said to be added to the property reevaluation capital reserve fund, or this common reserve fund, if there's anything like that on any of the warrant articles, if you would like to make an amendment to those, we will take each of those up in turn as we get to them.
Then I better go use.
Yes, before we do that, something, yes.
Meg Engels, Pinkamway, and I'm on the trustees, so I'm really into these funds. This doesn't, there's nothing wrong in these, it doesn't specify what the master account is, but these are unique names to specific funds, I feel they're sufficient definition that they don't need to be re-raised, where the other one was literally in the wrong hoofing. This one's just kind of non-specified. That's just my opinion.
Yes, Harriet.
Harriet, before you keep writing.
Yep, Harriet. What Meg is saying is that it's, the name of the fund is what you need, the type of fund is what you're referring to. So as long as the type is un-referred to in the article, the name stands as, so you don't need to clarify.
I'm fine, I'm not writing my name in that.
That's not wrong with this paper stuff.
Yeah, so then I, and I think that is correct, because what you were doing before was correcting literally in a statement that was in it, and these don't sound like the statements.
Right.
Okay. All right, any further debate from the floor on warrant article number 11 as read into the record? Frank, yes.
I'd like clarification. Mutual aid is not just for fighting woodland fires, we could be liable for mutual aid, that is the question, for a major structural fire, we had to call in other, other departments, either the Wakefield Department, or a major casualty, then we had to call ambulance or other places. We might be liable, is, this is a question, would we be liable for mutual aid for those situations too, not just for the fire one?
I think so.
Yeah, I think so too. So this is, this is, we have this little cushion here for mutual aid, but it's not a very big cushion compared to what a bill for mutual aid. In a lot of cases, the towns don't charge it. We've had a lot of this, is where we have had mutual aid and we haven't been charged, thank goodness, but in the event that we would be, the town can look for it, and it's one of the areas, so that's, that's the implication of voting against this.
I understand.
Further debate?
Brad Williamson. As far as mutual aid goes, Brookfield is not part of the mutual aid system. Our mutual aid assistance comes through Tom Wakefield, we cannot call for mutual aid, but contractually Wakefield covers our fire and the illness protection, so these are two different cemeteries. And I believe that the, this article is intended strictly for wildfire protection, because that is not covered under Wakefield's contract, although they do provide us with all the suppression. And as far as the government reimbursing, if they reimburse up to 50% of the government rates, which are far below what actual rates are, so in reality, we can't say if it's a $100,000 fire, the state is going to pick up $50,000, don't pick up 50% of whatever there, it's listed right about here.
Any further debate from the floor? All right, seeing none. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. None heard, the motion carries, and warrant article 11 has passed. All right, moving on to article 12. To see if the town will vote to discontinue the forest firefighting equipment fund, estimate amount $10,878, December 31st, 2023, and any interest accumulated created in 2017. Said the funds are to be deposited to be transferred to the town's general fund, majority vote is required, and the selectmen recommend this article and it will be taken up by Brian.
All right, last question, so, okay. We, we sold the fire truck this year, Wakefield has our, our, our fire, our fire contract and the, and the, and the, and the mutual aid is there, so, so, you know, we, 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 so we, so, so we don't really need to charge a fire truck or, you know, or the, or the equipment, so, so we're going to do the, the $11,000 back to the, back to the general, the general fund, so.
All right, do we have a motion from the floor on warrant article number 12?
Seven, General Governor.
And do we have a second?
Susan Rayman, Governor's Room.
All right, I'll now open the floor for debate on warrant article number 12. Yes. Sure.
Brad Williamson. Also have a mini forest fire warden for the town. And we don't have many fires here in town, large fires, we do have two or three small ones a year, which don't end up being a problem, although periodically we do have larger fires. The last one we had two years ago was up on Moose Mountain, and that was 48 acres. It took, it was a total involvement of three days, between one day to pick the fire out and two days to call, to be sure the fire wasn't. We were very fortunate, we did not get a bill, Wakefield was the primary response on that, with mutual aid only in five communities. There was no bill on that. Access to it was a problem, we weren't able to get a lot of equipment up there, so it was mostly handwork. As far as the protection equipment goes, we did have a town truck, which we've had five parking trucks in town now for better than 30 years. Excuse me. And the last one we just sold this year was an old highway truck. It was 20 years old, more than 20 years old, and from its highway service and winter problems and so forth, saw a lot of hard juice and salt and rock and so forth. So they knew we were out for a while. The, Wakefield has done a great job covering it and I believe they will continue to, however, when it gets into dry season, everybody has the same fire potential. And when I was on Wakefield years ago, I can remember one incident where they had nine kind of fires, offset by the train along railroad tracks. Handleable they do, I can say we at that point did a great job putting it up, and there was mutual aid involved in that too. The problem is, if we have a fire in town at the same time, Wakefield is committed to their fires, local mutual aid is committed to them, which means for mutual aid, it's going to have to come in, which takes a long response time, long response means bigger fires. Then the question comes, well, who is there to staff the truck if we do have a truck? We have five, myself as warden, five deputy wardens, yes, we're not always available in town all the time, we're most welcome with additional help if anybody's interested in joining our forestry folks, that'd be terrific. But if we do get the truck on the road, the piece of equipment I have in mind right now is a ex-military vehicle, Stuart Stevenson, if anyone's familiar with it, left terrain vehicles, something like that, we can make it top of Moose Mountain, or we'll go all the way through on a thick road, which if anybody tried, you know, it's pretty rough when you get up in there. It's vehicles free from the government, there's no strings attached to it, and some of the communities around us, like Ethel Hammond, we don't have them, I've seen them in operation, they're nice trucks, but I'm not going to get into the equipment that we should want and should have, just this fund could be important and I'd hate to lose it, I'd hate to have to come back at another time and ask for another $10,000 appropriation. We have the money, it's not costing us anything, we keep it, put it back in the general fund, which is nice, but $10,000 on a million dollar order, it's probably just a little amount too much anymore, so, I oppose this article.
Jim Coles, Governor's Room. Just quick question, when did the fire happen on Moose Mountain? How long ago was that?
Four or five years ago.
I was going to say five years ago. That's the last one we had, not a big fire.
Okay. Any further debate? Had to take off the moderator, has to do that. Any further debate on warrant article number 12? Yes, please.
Brad, as we kept the fund, you mentioned one vehicle that was, you're free, you're essential, what, what would you see the fund being used for in the near term if we kept it? Things as simple as heating for the vehicle itself, or, I'm sorry. What would I see the fund used for? Yeah, I'm sure it's for equipment acquisition. But what, what kind of equipment? You mentioned the one that the street, I wondered what other equipment. Primarily we'd need without the outfit, it comes with a cap and chassis, then we'd need outside with a water tank and a water pump and some of this other stuff. We still have over 2,000 feet of hogs, a high pressure pump, and various handles and so forth, which will help bond the vehicle. But it's going to need a voluntary surplus, it's going to need two batteries in it, it's going to need paint job, should have good ties on it, that would mean you should put a radio in it, put lights on it, so there'll be those types of things.
Yes.
And I believe the selectmen don't think it's a good investment. The truck is free, but the ongoing cost can be significant. We count on Wakefield for our support, they're doing extra, we just don't think it's the right way to go, best to get that equipment.
Okay, any further debate? Okay, seeing none, are you ready for the question? All right, all those in favor of warrant article number 12 say aye. All those opposed say nay. Think we're going to have to do an account. Jane, can you help me with that also? So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Keep your hands, everybody keep your hands up, it takes a minute.
10, give us a second.
I have 20 in favor, all together.
Okay.
I believe so. We're going to do that again. I just got 19. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand again, we keep them up until I tell you to put them down. How did you get it?
20.
Darn it, keep them up. All right, 22, keep them up. One other.
22.
22, all right. And, put your hands up if you say nay. More scrap, concert, never. I have 20. 20 also?
22.
Maybe put your hand up again. Something we're supposed to do like the roof's running. I have 20. 20? All right, so that passes with 22. So, article 12 passes with 22 yes votes, 20 no votes. Thank you for your patience, the next thing I was gonna do is make everyone go stand on different sides of the room. Moving on to warrant article number 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be added to the town building and office equipment trust fund. Majority vote is required, the selectmen recommend this article, and Rich will be speaking to article 15.
This has to do with our computer system. We buy the computers controlled out of operating them whenever we need them every year. This is for a more significant part of the system, it's called the server part, and in four or five years, you're gonna have to replace the server, and that's significantly more expensive, in the range of $20,000. So, we're trying to lose, anticipate that expenditure, start to put some money away for it.
All right, do I have a motion from the floor to take up this article?
Kate, can you handle this number?
Do we have a second?
Cheryl Terry.
Thank you. I now open the floor for debate on warrant article 13. Seeing none. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Article 13 passes. All right, moving on to article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to the town building and ground maintenance trust fund. Majority vote required, the selectmen recommended this article, and Rich will be taking this up for the selectmen.
Yeah, this is a little more challenging. We're making arrangements to paint the salt shed this year. And when the painter took a look at it, she goes, you've done a lot of rock. Maybe we have a lot of rock, maybe we don't, that's being discussed. But the issue is, the sand and salt that we stored there are right up against the pine boards. Pine boards. You know that sort, that's not gonna last too long. So, the idea is, put some money away, so that in the future, we can build a concrete crib. Because halfway up to the salt shed is where we store the salt and sand, so that we can protect the outside of the salt shed. It's gonna be more than 25, it might be 50,000, it's a concrete crib. And we're putting money away, just like some half lives.
All right, do I have a motion from the floor to take up warrant article 14?
Susan Reagan, Governor's Row.
And do I have a second?
Roseanne, Kay's line.
I open the floor for debate on warrant article 14. Yes.
Terry Ward, coupled on Dick Road. Will this be an annual allotment? Or is this just a one-time?
Well, it's gonna be more than 25,000 in due time.
I understand that. So, this will be an annual allotment you're gonna be asking here, or?
The first thing we have to do is go out and get some bids, what's it gonna look like. And once we have some idea of what it's gonna cost, then we can come back and final funds. We believe this could be worth the 25,000.
Okay, so it's a one-time deposit for the time being?
Try again. We don't know what it costs. What we're trying to do is put some money away in anticipation of that expense. We don't have a handle on it right now, but we believe it's more than 25,000. So, we're trying to put some money in the bank, so that when we get the engineering work on, we can find it.
Can we get some input from the road agent on this? Is he the principal user, wrote this?
Absolutely.
First, Tim Bill wrote it. It probably should have been built with concrete to begin with, it wasn't. I don't know the exact age of the building, but it does have some issues with it, not limited to rock or paint falling off, but the way the sand being against the wood blows the building out. So, if you're ever up there and you wanna see it, there's a sliding door on the side of the building that doesn't hang vertically with gravity, it's pushed out because the side of the building is bowed out from sand being against these walls. So, it's not only the rock, but the structure of the building. And this summer, I'm gonna try and put some sealer on the inside of it, to see if it'll slow the rot down, but in any event, at some point, it's gonna have to be repaired.
Any further debate on the floor for this warrant article? All right, seeing none. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state nay. Hearing none, motion carries, and article 14 has passed. All right, and warrant article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the selectmen's recommended sum of $1,454,015 for the town operating budget. Said sum does not include special or individual articles addressed in this warrant. Majority vote required, selectmen recommend this appropriation, and Ed will speak to it for the selectmen.
This is the same number that's been over at the public hearing. We went through the budget in detail, and I think there were several people here that were at that rate, so I'll just open it up to questions. The number of $1,454,015 is what we're looking for?
All right, is there a motion from the floor to take up warrant article 15? Do I have a second? Wherever you want. All right, I'll open the floor for debate now on warrant article 15. Yes.
Goldberg.
More inspirational question than challenging, but it's right off. What would the budget the last couple, three years for contest?
The equivalent, by that I mean the operating budget, extremely long arms. For last year, was $1,387,365.
It might have been a year before.
I don't have that number in hand, it was slightly less than that, so it was shown there. And then rental increase on the whole front.
And then the second question is, again, just for information. So, the school, the school cost, would be a separate bucket, right? And so, when you add all of them, all our, who is that? When you add total, total?
All. Well, the school budget is 1.2, so, and then you have the county, and you have the state tax. So, I think we collect about 2.6 million a year, is what we actually tax collected to cost the gas. Thank you.
Any further debate on the floor for warrant article 15? All right, seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries, and warrant article 15 is passed, and that is the final warrant article for today. And before we adjourn, is there any further business from anyone from the board today?
Phil Wilson, like, a couple years from last year or the year before, I had some complaints on a fire, a road agent. I just wanted to say this year, I think they're doing a wonderful job. That's my take from you.
Yes.
This is just a quick update. Jan, I bet I'm in Brookfield. We have a, last year, we did a beach pass program with a trial with Wolfboro. And this year, Rich and I went back to the select board and asked if we could extend that program. So, I wanted to make you aware of it, we'll send out a big town email last year. But the program runs from Labor Day to Memorial Day. It includes Albee and Cary Beaches. It's a first come, first served basis. So, we have 10 passes. You can check one out from Karen on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whenever she has office hours. You go in, you sign a document that just basically has the rules, and you can have the pass for the entire week, you just return it through the mail slot on Sunday evening, so that Karen always starts again on Monday morning with 10 passes. The beach passes hangs on your RV mirror. When you go to Albee Beach, for example, they just check that you have the pass, and then you can park there. It's great for little kids, it's great for anyone who likes to swim laps, because it's pretty shallow, trees, lots of shade, great for lunch, they have restrooms, barbecue grill. So, just wanted to let everybody be aware that that's a service that's available, because we do pay money into the Parks and Rec Department, and take advantage.
Jan, we said Labor Day and Memorial Day, you mean?
More Memorial Day than Labor Day. Yeah, so you've probably been there, you can go over there now for free, it's a great little hike, the water's great, but, and part of the beach is sectioned off just for people to swim, and the other side of it is for sailing lessons, so that's also something you can sign up for. But it's a really terrific place to go, so.
Lynn?
I used that last year, and it's my understanding, though, that you can park across the street and walk in. It really is a parking pass, or, correct?
Yes, it's a parking pass, you can park across the street, but if you have two little kids and a basket and...
Yeah, I have used it with my grandchildren.
Yeah, exactly, and that's what I would like to do this, yeah.
Jan, is part of that access to Abenaki as well with the resident crisis?
Yes, Abenaki, right. And so, actually, Wolfboro Parks and Rec provided, so we had 229. People in town use the recreation areas, the biggest area we used was Abenaki for daily skiers. But we had people participate in track and field, sailing, soccer, swim lessons, and skating. So, there's a lot that we can participate in at the local reduced rates. Yeah.
At Abenaki, the...
Hey, what's your name, Steve? Steve Terry.
Those passes aren't necessary after 6 o'clock at night, is that correct?
I think it's actually after 5 o'clock, so you can go over, yeah, you don't need them. Yeah, and again, it is, just to be clear, Memorial Day to Labor Day. The heist. Okay, great, thanks.
I'd like to make a comment also.
Yes.
And that provides the opportunity to participate in all Wolfboro activities and sign up early through a sign-up machine. So, we're being treated just like Wolfboro residents when it comes to sign-in, and that was the issue with these games or programs that people want to participate in. It's open to residents first, and we'll consider residents then to the public, but that's a very important point.
That is what I'm gonna do.
Ryan Creacher, Conservation Chairman. Earth Day is April 42nd, like it always is, we will have Town Cleanup Week starting on the 19th, Saturday, the 19th. We'll probably have a little tape a lot here and some bags available for you if you want. What we've found over the last two years is a lot of people walk all year long, and our roads are really, we really keep the town people cleaned up all year long, but we will have a sign out back where the old salt shed used to be, and if you find, if you collect it, if you do town cleanup that week, and that'll be the whole week, you can bring a bag, you can put it there, and we'll take it to the dump for you. Or if you find any big stuff along the road, you can bring it here, and then we will, we will take it to the dump for you. Not your backyard, as long as I put it.
Don't move something from your backyard if you're excited.
It will be there. Also, it's in the town report, but we get a major logging on the town preserve, that I hope that everybody knows is there, is the 250 acres off of Lightford Road and off Cottleville Road. We have now one marked trail, we have a trail signs, it's a really nice trail, goes from Cottleville down to Hayfield. We're gonna be, because of the logging we did last year, it's opened up a lot more of land, so we're gonna put in additional trails with signs, crime, and family crime, and for little kids too. So, it's a resource here in town that's open, and we encourage people to, one, up volunteer to work on it, but also to utilize it, and it's a wonderful place to go walk and see. Goes all the way up next to the rail trail, so you may loop with the rail trail if you want, so. Is there, and those, we have a current map up on the website of the current trail, and we will update that as we put the new trails in, you can get that information on the town anyway. Right? There's parking available at two places, there's a parking lot on Cottleville Road, that you can pull in, park there, and there's parking on Lightford and the old Governor's Road, right, park there. Yeah, that's been open, there's more parking there now, when we did the logging, we opened that up a little bit, but now we have several cars in there now, so. And, and, oh, the old Governor's Road, which was what Governor O'Ward used to get to his house, that goes into the property, is in much better shape. It used to be a little challenging to block it, it's now really blockable, red light on it. You can, it is open, you can drive on it, but we recommend, you know, parking, logging, that's the best way to use the property.
Yes. Also, on that same preserve site that Frank is talking about, there was a stone solvole that was owned by Colonel James Hackett, Revolutionary War soldier, he was a shipbuilder. This ship, the Raleigh, is on the center circle of the Neanderthal State Flag. We've done a lot of work in there as a result of the logging that opened it up, to clean it up and try to preserve that from a historical perspective. So, the Heritage Commission's Bob Silasak is chairing a group of people that are working on that. So, we will definitely take all of his to help us out with that. Bob will put it on the webpage and make sure that it's made available to everybody. There's gonna be an informational session on April 22nd, I believe we say, that talks about Colonel Hackett and his history, and then, I'm sorry, that's on April 19th. Then on April 26th, there's gonna be two tours of that site for anybody that would like to attend. Information, thank you.
All right, and Rich, I wonder if you wanna do it?
Yes, I... I've got a bad foot, that's the issue. They wanted, this is Brian, twice made, after 12 years, this is...
And one, this is Brian, please, after 12 years as a father. A beautiful day. Reckon it for you for 12 years between selected town. Thank you very much, Brian.
All right, and any further business?
I just have one announcement.
Announce it louder.
What announcement? Heritage Commission, and it's Saturday at this spot at 10 o'clock in the morning. Ed will be doing a corporate about thankful serving. And we have corporate, bill flyers on the rest of the programs throughout the year.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Ed Camo, Stoner Road. Please repeat the school meeting. This school budget and these finances are unsustainable. As you can tell, if you look at this trend line, in every meeting I'm covering, Osiphe, Tamwood, everything, the school budgets are getting completely out of control and not, not sustainable at all. We are going to be all run out of town and not be able to keep up on these taxes. We are, the selectmen over the years have tried so hard to keep the town costs down. And we are suffering from a $67 million budget. I mean, the fact that we have to go back to the town, back to the school district to argue this budget is sending alarms to them, because even the well-heater people in the area are having trouble keeping up with this. We all know this. So please repeat that meeting in time for that meeting, and please attend.
So again, the notice of the recount on Governor Whitworth, Regional School District, Article 2, regarding the budget that I read earlier, is March 20th, 2025, at 3:00 PM at the Kingswood Regional Little School Multipurpose Room located at 404 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. Again, it's March 20th at 3:00 PM.
Could I have a follow up, please?
Sure.
A few years ago, a group of people got together and we put a petition warrant out for them to have a budget committee for the school district. And that was just basically so we had more control over the expenditures. Because years prior, they were having financial meetings by themselves, nobody was there. We had videotaped them and realized that I don't think the public was really aware of how much funding was being asked for. So when deliberative session happens, no one goes to the deliberative session. We had 80 people sign that petition to get in on the warrant. And all the employees of the, of the school district came in and defeated it immediately. No one shows up at the, at the deliberative sessions too. So we're kind of, we're teetering on not being involved enough. We all come here, but we don't go to deliberative session. Please go to that meeting and express how concerned you are with how much the school taxes are going up. There's also legal cases going on down at Concord, going on for years, because our constitution does say that the state is supposed to fund education. And why all this is being placed on us as taxpayers is beyond me. Now, obviously, that has to work through the system. And there's changes down in DC. With the closure of the Department of Education, there's going to be more control in this state for education. But as of now, if this does not change, we are not going to be able to live here anymore. So please go to the meeting.
Do you, by chance, want us to moderate what that vote was on article? I believe it was, it was like within four votes, I think. Did it, yeah, did it pass or, or, it was defeated? Yes.
So it's not a recount, it's a revote?
It's referred to as a recount.
Okay. But it's a revote?
I think it's a recount. Yeah, they call it, yeah, it's a recount, it's not, so notice of recount again. Yeah, it's calling a recount.
So the votes that.
I know what the notice is, but it says notice of recount on Governor Whitworth, Regional School District, Article 2. It only refers to his recount in the notice.
But I don't understand that, because to me, a recount is, votes are cast, they're going to count them again. So basically, showing up is not going to change anything. And we're not going to be involved in anything, because we're not going to be counting votes. So I don't honestly understand the point of meaning.
I think, because the recount has to happen publicly.
So we're going to watch them physically count, correct?
I don't know the, the specific process that they follow, because I know that they use voting machines. But it, it is, yeah, it's a recount, it's not revoting.
Mr. Bob, you're correct about that, I believe.
Yep.
Ed Vogel, Stoner Road, you are correct. I don't think we're revoting on it. I believe it is a recount.
Yeah.
But if it fails and they can't find, if they can't find the votes and it passes, we're, no offense, we're screwed. But if it, if it fails again at that recount, then they have to hold a special meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
And then we get to vote again. Is that correct, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, I believe that's right. The only one that I remember on the ballot talking about specifically authorizing a special meeting, I think it was for Article 3, but I believe you did state the process correctly in the event that it does fail. Ed, for his information, the operating budget, 12 was 1,527 yes and 1,531 no. So we were correct that it was a four vote difference.
Now, if we vote again, that means that the, didn't you say that it's going to go back to the 66 million? Or this, it's going to be to the lower?
Yeah, should the article, should this article be defeated? The default budget shall be $66,574,504, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the government of the County of the Regional School District or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40 totally 13, Roman numerals 10 and 16, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget policy. Yes, anything further?
Moderator.
Related to anything, yep.
I just.
What's your name?
Mike Moore, I forgot. Just to remind you, too, it's really not a difference between 66 billion and 67. Because last year's operating budget was north, just north of 62. So in that language that you just read us, what they're talking about is the $3.5 to $4 million that had already been committed to and we can't undo, meaning union negotiated contracts and all the other legally binding things. So we're on the hook for all but that last million, which is the discretionary spending that the school board wanted us to vote yes for. So just think about the fact that it went from 62 to 66 or 67 in one year. And that's serving under 3,000 students total in the district. We have one of the highest per capita student expenses in the country. Under 3,000 students.
All right, anything further on?
Any topics?
At 3:00 PM, where, at the junior high, you said it?
At the middle school.
Kingswood Regional Middle School Multipurpose Room at 404 South Main Street in Wolfboro. All right, if anyone has any further town business, I'd like to thank you all for participating in the democratic process today. Don't forget, if you are one of the people that was elected to the town official position, we are all going to be meeting in the other room in a moment, right after I adjourn, so we can be sworn in. And I adjourn the town meeting.
Yes.
Hold on.
So when we fill in the name, like, I.
State your name.
Jose Jimenez.
Yeah, I usually just say, I, state your name, and then everyone says their name all at the same time.
Okay. Thank you all for being willing to serve. So just repeat, after me, raise your right hand, please. Okay, I, state my name, do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will bear faith and true allegiance. And affirm that I will bear your true allegiance. That's on me, you guys. The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all of the duties.
And perform all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
State your new role.
As my supervisor. And supervisor.
And your term.
We're being so one year.
Thank you. According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of this Constitution.
Of this Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I need you all to, if you would, I'm a mom, to complete your oath. I'm trying to keep it easy, so you just need to sign a name and state it.
Well, after I sign this, I will swear you.
Oh, I can see your face on it. We're trying to keep this very easy, is this easy, mine? Oh, yeah, oh, this is John, and I saw it. Oh, thank you. So much for keeping it easy. Well, I have two.
No, she has to, because she has two. Karen, I'll take care of her. Raise your right hand. I.
I.
State your name. Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As. For a term of, according to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help me God.
I will sign that one after you sign it. So you need to sign the bottom. Someone can sign this board? Any in the election? Uh, this is your first stance on the board?
Oh, thank you, my best supporter.